We had the meeting a little bit late this evening, but welcome to the first regular board meeting of the 2017-18 school year. Excited to be starting up again, and happy solar eclipse day. Hope everyone had a chance to check that out. So Sergio, do you want to go ahead and do the motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second. Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Woodie?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do you have any announcements you'd like to make, Dr. Goran?
I have a series of comments and announcements as we open up the school year, but I want to start within the context of events nationally. And I want to reflect on what I reflected in this room when we had 70-plus teachers, educators from the district taking our Beyond Diversity training, and when we welcomed 60-plus teachers, new teachers, new educators to the district. And I think we are all struck by the events in Charlottesville. And so in the wake of Charlottesville, I want to state publicly and clearly that hate has no home in District 65 schools. Let me be even more clear. There are not two sides to the story. In moving from colorblindness to color consciousness, it is essential that we collectively address equity in our respective spheres of influence. Racism, hateful words and actions, and discrimination surfaces every day, even in our own backyard. That is not what we, as residents of Evanston and Skokie, and what we, as Americans, should ever tolerate. And now what matters, what matters most, is what we do about that. Our reasons to focus on equity in the district are obvious. We cannot and will not accept the status quo. In District 65, we are committed to the best possible education for our children. Two years ago, we embarked on efforts to improve academic outcomes for all students, especially students of color, to dismantle systemic and institutional racism, and to provide opportunities for staff to examine bias and to think deeply about issues of race in intentional and thoughtful ways. While we are only at the early stages of our journey, our commitment to equity is stronger than ever. I want to follow that with a bit of an overview of some of the work that we've been doing on equity even in the summer months. So as I just said, we recently welcomed 50 new teachers to the district, and each one had the opportunity to attend Beyond Diversity training in this room last Thursday and Friday. Following last week's training, we now have approximately 230 staff people who have completed Beyond Diversity training. This includes nearly all principals, assistant principals, cabinet members, including the superintendent and board members. Last Monday and Tuesday, all principals, assistant principals, and cabinet leaders, which is the senior management team of the district, learned together about equity leadership, including learning from our colleague and neighbor Dino Robinson of the Shorefront Legacy Foundation about Evanston's history and the impact of institutional racism on our school community. Over the summer, four teachers, Pat Anderson, Genevieve Arseneau, Christine Skung, excuse me, and Ruth Young, and one administrator, Peter Goddard, spent a week learning to become seed coordinators and facilitators. This equips us to offer an expanded number of seed cohorts this year, including two cohorts where some parents will be able to participate. To date, 60 people have participated in seed. This Thursday, when we welcome teachers back to school, everyone will participate, the entire teaching staff and administrative staff of the district, in an equity learning event that includes presentations from Dr. David Stovall and Dr. Jacqueline Battaloria. Over the summer, our curriculum and instruction team, principals and teachers, worked hard to be ready for the start of school, which will include a detract Algebra I course, supplemented by an Algebra Xite course for students who scored below the 25th percentile. This summer, as we plan the board calendar that you'll review tonight, we paid careful attention to the recommendations from our consultant, Corey Wallace. Many of our recommendations have been incorporated into our work for this year. And on November 6, we will discuss our strategic plan and equity crosswalk, which will show how we plan to incorporate Corey's recommendations as key priorities for the district. And we are moving forward with the development of administrative procedures for best serving our transgender students. We plan a focus group with a variety of stakeholders by the end of September, and implementation of the administrative procedures later this fall. So we are moving forward in a proactive manner as we start the school year, and we're very, very much excited about it. Two other announcements. One is that we will be having algebra information sessions for eighth-grade parents and families. As you know, the school board approved a shift in algebra programming for the upcoming school year. Families of eighth-grade students are invited to join us for one of six information sessions to learn more about the shifts in algebra placement, including an overview of the new Algebra Xite class and to answer questions and concerns. The sessions will be facilitated by Stacy Beardsley, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and respective school leads. All sessions will be one hour and will be held in middle school libraries. Spanish interpretation will be provided. Details, including dates and times, are available on the District 65 website. And finally, I want to invite everyone to a District 65 Back to School Ice Cream Social. I want to take the opportunity to invite all of our students, staff, families, to celebrate the start of the new year with our Back to School Ice Cream Social. We hope that everyone will come to join a tasty treat from an ice cream truck and meet our leadership team and school board members. The event will take place on Thursday, August 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the lawn right here at JEH. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. And in particular, thank you for your strong words and unequivocal words regarding the things that are happening around the country right now. It just highlights how important the work that we are undertaking now is. And I appreciate the highlighting what has been going on and invite the community to stay engaged and to, you know, to stay engaged in the work and to push us as we continue on. Do any other board members have any announcements or anything? So this is a very exciting meeting because we are going to be appointing a new board member, Rebecca Mendoza, who we will more formally introduce at that time. But before we do that, we do have a couple of other agenda items to get through. First, we will open up time for public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education will not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee. Please remember to state your name and remember that you have three minutes to address the board. So with that, our first speaker will be Roger Williams.
Good evening, Dr. Goran, members of the board and community members. My name is Roger Williams. I'm the president of Opel. And I have a letter that I wanted to kind of highlight. I'm not going to read everything in the letters, some details, but I have a copy for everyone here who would like. Here we go. "In October of 2015, a group of concerned citizens requested a school board meeting to address the underachievement of Black students in District 65 schools. We rallied over 300 parents to this meeting to protest the continued undereducation of Black students in Evanston. Community members shared over 90 minutes of personal testimony, highlighting the generational disparities in Evanston experienced by the Black community. These disparities were confirmed in a report, this is a report on Black student achievement in District 65, which was released in April of 2016. Now, for the last three years, Opel has pushed and collaborated with Dr. Goran and the board to provide meaningful solutions to the achievement gap and has waited patiently for the board to address our request. We appreciate your acceptance of our recommendations that have led to the District 65 racial equity policy, some of the things that you spoke of, Dr. Goran, the district's commitment to have all the teachers and the entire school board attend Beyond Diversity training by 2018, the district's commitment to produce quarterly discipline reports disaggregated by race, and finally, District 65's commitment to seed training. However, we would be remiss indeed not to express continued disappointment at other areas we feel the district has neglected. In May 2016, you requested a written statement from Opel outlining areas in which we felt the district could better serve Black and Latinx students. Unfortunately, the most important of these requests have not been met. We continue to be concerned about the lack of urgency as we begin a new school year without confidence that our children's educational careers and personal trajectories have been significantly improved." Following is a sample of some of Opel's current requests. And you'll get all of this in detail when you see the actual letter. First one, the first area of concern is hiring of Black teachers. Our request is that you produce a public report on the status of Opel's previous request for, and I say previous request, for three Black teachers at JEH and 10 additional Black teachers in District 65 schools. Is that the ding telling me I'm running out of time? Okay. Secondly, develop and make available to the public and implement a hiring plan and retention process for increasing and sustaining Black teachers throughout the district. I'm going to run through a few of these other ones, but you'll see it in detail. Another area of concern is K-3 literacy. Another request by Opel is produce a public report on the K-3 literacy results disaggregating students by race, grade, and school. And we like that by September 25th, since that was promised in the past. And finally, third area of concern is JEH Early Childhood Center. We request that you develop, make available to the public, and implement a plan that will improve ISEL test scores of Black and Latinx children enrolled in the JEH Early Childhood Center by 50%. And we'd like this plan to develop and make it public by September 30th of 2017. And we'd like these test scores to have been, to be improved by that 50% by the 2019 through 2020 school year. Now, those are just some of the samples of some of the requests that we're making. And we're not the, Opel is not the only group that's making this. If you remember, three years ago, when we, when everyone came in here, there were other people involved in it. But anyway, before I get into those, we request a response to this letter that you're all going to be getting no later than September 5th, 2017. Respectfully, these are the people who are involved in this. Respectfully, the Board of Directors of the Organization for Positive Action Leadership, that's Opel, Evanston North Shore Branch of NAACP Education Committee, and Bethel AME Church of Evanston. Thank you.
Next is Tanya Brown.
My name is Tanya Brown. As stated, I currently live in the eighth ward, grew up in the fifth ward. I have attended District 65 schools, K-8, Lincolnwood and Haven. My children attend Oakden and Chute. I'm here to speak on behalf of my Black children. I want to be clear that I'm here speaking on behalf of my Black children. I will continue to reference my Black children because I cannot and will not allow my Black children to get grouped in with other children of color who are not Black. My Black children have a different fight than other children of color who are not Black. My Black children don't qualify for any of the district's programming for students who are not meeting grade level standards. On May 12th, my daughter asked me if she was tested into the advanced math. She did. My Black daughter tested into the advanced math, algebra. This board voted against the advanced math classes. Why did you test my Black child? Why you allow my Black child to pass and prove that she can do the work and then negate the test? This board is calling for mixed-level algebra classes. Since mixed-level classes is what the board wants and test scores don't matter, then I want my younger Black child to be in the summer programs that are held in the school districts that have the goal of combating the summer learning loss. What is the district doing to help advance my Black children? My Black children deserve an advanced program just as much as the children need support in combating the summer learning loss. Please share your plans to help Black children excel because it appears you are only involved and worried about playing catch-up. I work full-time. My husband works full-time. My children are involved in activities outside of school with all of that. I still have the responsibility to make sure my children do well in school. When others have called on the board to release stats of children of color in regards to the achievement gap, I felt something was missing. Where were the stats of Black children who were not failing? I sat and listened in annoyance while folks placed blame on others disgracing certain schools in the district without looking in the mirror, just like folks who are demanding answers and solutions to the achievement gap. I want services from the district to help push my Black children further. I can't come to a board meeting every week. I have stuff to do. I'm not going to ask anyone else to speak for me either. I stand here in anger because I really believe the board members who voted against an advanced math class somehow thought they would be doing something to reduce the achievement gap for children of color. Despite the research that you have shared, there is also research that shows the lack of benefits to advanced students in mixed-level classrooms. Some folks may talk about the high school, but don't just assume my children will go to the high school. I'm speaking about District 65. Give my Black children services and programs to help them further excel. I'm not talking about referring my Black children out to outside programs that cost an arm and a leg either, unless you're going to provide it to me at the same cost as programs that assist students in playing catch-up.
Our next speaker is Abdul Shakur.
Hello. Hi. It's Abdul Shakur, and I'm just sharing some thoughts. This thing is like, oh my gosh. I have a letter I'm going to read. I am a parent, educator, and a community member, and I have some concerns about our social studies curriculum. So I'll just read it. "Distinguished members of the board, although it was shocking to see neo-Nazis violently defend a Confederate monument in Charlottesville, Virginia, I was similarly shocked last May when I discovered that my daughter's school, a school that I love, a school named after Martin Luther King Jr., no less, was putting on an event called Pioneer Days. This is an event where Black and Brown children, children whose ancestors may have been enslaved and killed by those same pioneers, are asked to crawl inside the mind of a white supremacist and somehow see themselves as a square dance and pan for gold. Unfortunately, this event takes place across the district. It's sad that this is also business as usual in our community, a community that despite its bumper stickers and yard signs, offers educational opportunity to Black students nearly four grade levels behind their white peers. The Eurocentric focus of our District 65 current social studies curriculum is an unacceptable artifact of that opportunity gap. The battle in Charlottesville was about tearing down a white supremacist monument, but these types of monuments are being erected every day in the minds of our children, every day in our district. History should help young people understand the past, but more importantly, what is to come? What is to come next? The new day we can't imagine. Offering pioneers and pilgrims as a foundational framework is to miseducate students, to leave all of our children unprepared to live in a future beyond white supremacy. Donald Trump is a product of that paradigm. I'm part of a group called Parents for All Peoples History. We believe that the District 65 social studies curriculum should be culturally relevant and inspire critical thinking in all its students. It should prepare our children for a world beyond white supremacy by not relying on a Eurocentric point of view. Instead, it should present a range of perspectives with a focus on justice, empathy, and racial equality, and racial equity, excuse me. Several months ago, we started organizing with other concerned parents around the district, collecting stories about the harm being done to our children, you'll hear some of those tonight, and talking to administrators. We understand that the social studies curriculum is not slated for revision until 2019-2020, but we feel this is one of the most urgent concerns our community faces, and it can't wait. We need everyone to get involved and help us tear down these monuments to white supremacy in our classroom.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sue LaKim.
Hello, members of the board. Dr. Goran, my name is Sue LaKim, and I'm the mother of a fourth grader and a kindergartner at Lincoln. I want to thank Abdul and Candace Shakur for their leadership with the Parents for All Peoples History. I immigrated to the States with my family when I was six years old. When people told us to go back to our country or called us chinks, we're not Chinese, my father would tell me and my brother that in fact Native Americans were Asiatic people who walked across the continents. So if you thought about it, our ancestors were here first. He also told us on more than one occasion that the United States was land stolen from Native Americans, so no one else could truly claim this land as their own any more than the most recent immigrants. Forty years later, my son's favorite part of the third-grade pioneer unit was a video game that put him in the role of a pioneer family in a covered wagon as they made their way west, experiencing hunger, disease, broken equipment, and helpful Native Americans. I know he also learned about Native American culture in second grade, but as far as I could tell, there was no discussion of the violent encounters between indigenous peoples and white settlers, or what it means to settle lands that are already populated. After Charlottesville, a blogger tweets, presumably in defense of preserving Confederate history, "Challenge: Name five historical figures from mid-19th century or earlier who wouldn't be considered extremely racist by modern standards." He quickly got a long list of responses that highlighted the narrowness of the white supremacist framework, in which he literally could not imagine historical figures as anyone but white people. The real challenge, of course, is that such a framework isn't unique to one random person on the internet. My point in sharing these anecdotes is that the perspective my father provided let me know that the story of brave pilgrims and friendly Indians was not the only one, that such a version of events could and should be questioned. But why is the kind of alternative story my father told still alternative? Why are we still trafficking in sanitized myths? We need to examine the stories we're telling our children about who made history and who counts in that history and rewrite the narrative. Recent studies about the impact of culturally relevant curricula show that, as one researcher put it, "The dominance of Euro-American perspectives leads many students to disengage from academic learning, whereas when students take courses that connect with their lived experience, engagement increases as do literacy skills, overall achievement, and attitudes toward learning." So if we care about reading and math scores, if we care about closing the achievement gap, and about social emotional learning, we should care about social studies. I'm here because as both a parent and an educator, I want the social studies curriculum to broaden and deepen the account of our nation's beginnings so that all students know they are part of the story. Yes, such changes may take great effort, meet with resistance, feel difficult or uncomfortable to implement, but I urge the board to make that effort to ensure that the story we tell our children is truly a shared one, based on the full truth of our difficult, tragic, imperfect history, as well as on its idealistic vision of a more perfect union. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ginevra Gallo Bayades. I have a student who was at Washington and who will be starting at Nichols this fall. I'm not, I haven't been working with the parent group that's been speaking, but I definitely support their efforts and have been thinking along the same lines in terms of curricular adjustments. I really appreciated your words, Dr. Goran, at the top of the meeting. I think that those statements are very necessary and very bold, and I am sure that you are all aware that they also require bold action. I'm speaking tonight to advocate that our schools continue to take up the necessary challenge of dismantling institutionalized racism and becoming leaders in educational equity. We need district-wide curricular changes that will challenge colonizing narratives, provide multicultural perspectives and lived experiences, and allow each student to understand the scope of history that is broader than a white, European-centered lens. I know that the board is likely to consider further curricular changes. You've already tackled algebra. You know social studies is on the docket. I'm sure there's consideration for the TWEI programming, so there is a lot to be considered. And I'm here just to say aloud and ask that this task should be accompanied, all of those tasks, by a study and careful look at programming in both TWEI and general ed classrooms, and specifically to identify areas that overtly or covertly perpetuate anti-Black, anti-immigration, anti-Semitic, and anti-Muslim narratives because they are present. Children who see themselves reflected and centered in every story develop an internalized sense of superiority. In a job market and economy that is increasingly global, that internalized perspective is going to be damaging. It will create cognitive dissonance, and it will perpetuate the very systems that we are working so hard to confront at this point in history. Meanwhile, children who rarely or never see themselves centered often develop a sense of inferiority, seeing themselves as invisible or invaluable, when nothing could be further from the truth, or, I would hope, from the type of community that we are all working so hard to build. Please be courageous in your undertaking and brave in your choices. Please commit to ensuring that all of our students are able throughout the year to see themselves centered in the lessons that they encounter. Our students are going to need to think more deeply and critically about their intersecting identities and legacies than we can even possibly predict. Be bold for them.
Hello. Hello. My name is Faith Brown. I am going into eighth grade at Chute Middle School, and I live in the eighth ward with my parents. And I'm going to be talking about stress and anxiety with the students testing for the advanced classes. Testing into the advanced math classes gives kids stress and anxiety. I remember talking to kids that were worried about if they were going to make it into the class. They were saying, "I don't know if I can make it. I think I bombed the test," stuff like that. like that. Most of the kids were saying, "Then for you to have caused so many kids stress over this test and not put any advanced math classes makes it 10 times worse. We could have not taken the test, and that would have caused so much less stress over the kids, and probably less money for the district to spend, because I bet it costs money for the children to take the test." And then, the look of amazement that all the kids got when they got into the advanced classes gets ripped away from them, because no one's getting into the advanced classes, because everyone's going to the same class, all the classes are merging. And when you think you're going to have classes with your friends, they're ripped away, because everyone's going to the same class. And I was in a class last year with a bunch, like, five rowdy kids, they all didn't talk, and I thought, wow, maybe this year I can be with kids that actually want to learn. But now, I don't know if I can, because there's still going to be kids that are rowdy, that aren't going to talk, and that's going to distract us from learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Sweeney.
I wanted to echo the comments made about the importance and the necessity of a social studies curriculum that explicitly incorporates multiple perspectives. Too much of the history that's taught to our kids is void of the stories, the accomplishments, the challenges, and the victories of non-white people. This makes lessons half-truths and creates a false narrative that impacts all of our children. Because these narratives are so deeply embraced by many of us who were taught them in school, I found it helpful to think about these lessons through the lens of another country. I thought about Black South Africa that was colonized by the Dutch Boer around the same time that the British colonized America, where of course, that was already settled by the Native Americans. It's unimaginable to think of telling South Africa's story as one in which the Dutch Boer were pioneers, claiming and settling land that was theirs for the taking. It's unimaginable that Black South African children would be asked to dress like the Dutch at a school event. When I look at how we teach our history through this lens, the irresponsibility and the harm is clear. I understand that there is not a detailed curriculum for each grade, and the responsibility is that of the teachers. While all the teachers my children have had have been conscientious, caring, and intelligent, it's unreasonable to ask them to individually create culturally relevant material. And I, of course, I know that there are many teachers who have done this and done this well, and my daughter had one of these teachers at Nichols. He taught from primary source materials, and he asked really critical questions. She loved this class, and I was so appreciative of the conversations that it sparked at home. But I want to close by saying that only when we own up to our history do we have the ability to get the kind of society that we hope for. We need to tell the truth. So in line with Dr. Goran's opening words about equity, I ask that the district revise the social studies curriculum this year. And if it's okay, the next person on the list was not able to come, so I have her words. Kathy McGority Torres.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Also, these are not my words, this is Kathy McGority Torres. I have two kids in District 65 schools right now, and a two-year-old who I hope will join the district in the next couple of years. I am a white woman born and raised in the Midwest, and my husband is a Mexican immigrant born in the mountains of Guerrero. I should have checked that. My children are growing up at a time when people like their father are frequently dehumanized and even demonized in political discourse and in the media here in the U.S. Latin American immigrants are a perpetual scapegoat, blamed for bringing crime, stealing jobs, abusing social service programs. Because of this, my husband and I have always been aware of the possibility that our children might want to deny or look away from their Mexican heritage. As such, it's always been important to us to provide them with the knowledge and the stories we think will help them embrace their roots. We've never wanted them to feel that they or other members of their family are somehow lesser because of where they came from. So we've talked with them about how huge portions of this country once belonged to Mexico, and we teach them about the role Hispanic people have played and continue to play in building this country. This is why the question of social studies is so important for me. Now, I want to point out here that my son, who just left third grade, is in the TWEI program, and as such, did not engage in the Westward Expansion Unit that often ends in Pioneer Day celebration. Instead, he was slated to learn in his classroom about Aztec and Mayan civilizations, which I appreciated. Nevertheless, the culminating social studies celebration that he was invited to participate in did not in any way reflect the curriculum that was covered in his classroom. Instead, he was directed to act out pioneer scenes and do pioneer dances in a celebration that excluded the learning that he had experienced, learning that directly spoke to his own sense of identity. I feel like my half-Mexican son walked away from that celebration with a clear impression of whose experience and perspective really matter when our community tells the story of this country's history. It is the perspective of the European colonizer, the white man. And I'm left to wonder how my husband and I can possibly convince our kids that both halves of their identities are equally important in this society when our district's social studies curriculum still centers whiteness as a matter of habit and tradition.
Jennifer Lee. Oh, okay. Diane Grayden.
Hi, my name is Diane Grayden, and thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My comments are in support of the diversification of the District 65 curriculum. I'm a writer and a visual artist in Evanston. I'm also a retired attorney. My grandkids live in District 65. I'm here to support broadening the District 65's social studies curriculum to more accurately reflect the history and contribution of people of color to our great country. There's an incorrect perception that a diverse social studies curriculum will somehow distract kids from developing their writing skills. In other words, that skillful writing happens in a monocultural vacuum. I want to tell you a story about an extraordinary person, an extraordinary author, who met his writing muse through a multicultural class assignment in the fifth grade. This was in the 1980s. He was a quiet child who absorbed books like candy. He found school marginally interesting, I think. One day, his class was studying African-American history, and he received an assignment about the slave trade. While glimmers of a superior writing ability had been poking out in his earlier classwork, it took this assignment, this multicultural assignment, where he imagined himself on a slave ship during the Middle Passage, that let his family get a glimmer of what his writing potential actually was. His narration carried the voice of a terrified, bewildered boy determined to survive, of the taste of salt in the air, of churning Atlantic waters drenching this ship and its people, of homesickness and a hesitant friendship with a crew member, a boy his own age, of the thick, fetid air of the hold below deck, the screams, the moans, and the small kindnesses. This assignment captured this child's imagination. The vividness of this piece still gives me chills, it's not just the air conditioning. I had never read anything like it. He was there, but not in a scary way. He had it, the writing gift, the ability to connect with the divine creative force, a little boy with a monster talent. Folks, it was as if the fifth grader came out of his bedroom waving the literary equivalent of a quadratic equation, saying, "Look what I figured out by myself." His exposure at a relatively young age to the fact of American chattel slavery caused a talent to appear that otherwise might have taken many more years to emerge. Almost done. This young man is now a published author as well as an educator who teaches writing. My message is that young people need to connect their education with their lives and imaginations to succeed. They will demand relevance, especially this year. The KKK, Nazis, civil rights, and slavery are all over the media these days. Kids have legitimate questions about how the heck our society devolved into this mess. Continuing a tradition of Eurocentric courses in 2017 at the expense of diversity will cause students to tune out. In conclusion, we have no idea what the world would look like 10 years from now, let alone 30. Futurists posit that the greatest asset children will need to succeed is flexibility. So we need to begin early to introduce District 65 students to the diverse American cultures which inform our unique literature, rhythm, colors, dance, and history. We need to capture their imaginations in interesting ways, for this is the wellspring of creativity. Our diverse citizenry is responsible for our country's immense energy. Rather than hiding from it, let's embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment portion. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Anya, you've got the motion here?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations. Resolution authorizing notice to remedy destruction of June, July, 2015 closed session audio recordings. June, July, 2017, Board of Education and Committee meeting minutes. May, June, 2017, list of bills, Treasurers' Report, Budget Amendment, Appointment of the authorized agent with IMRF, and gift acceptance to District 65.
Second?
Second. Hernandez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries. Now, we will go on to seating our new board member. Talk a little bit about the board vacancy and about Ms. Mendoza. We, effective July 7, 2017, Omar Brown resigned his board seat due to professional commitments that took him out of town too much. We thank him for his service, and we've got to business to working on appointing his replacement. After extensive community outreach, we received 24 applications for the board seat. And after reviewing the applications and interviewing candidates, we selected Ms. Mendoza. A little bit about Rebecca. Born in Mexico City, Ms. Mendoza immigrated to Evanston at the age of five with her mother. As a lifelong Evanstonian, her ties to the community run deep, having attended Washington Elementary, Nichols Middle School, and Evanston Township High School. A graduate of Leadership Evanston, Ms. Mendoza served as a board member for the Evanston Coalition for Latino Residents for eight years, as a mentor for Project SOAR for five years, and a member of the Evanston Arts Council for three years. She currently volunteers with Books and Breakfast and remains a steadfast advocate for closing the achievement gap in Evanston's public schools. Professionally, Ms. Mendoza has worked for several Evanston-based organizations, including Family Focus Inc., Magal YMCA, and YOU. She currently works at the Rotary Foundation as a regional grants officer, where she is responsible for evaluating and awarding grants to humanitarian service clubs in Europe and Africa. Ms. Mendoza holds a dual bachelor's degree in psychology and women's studies from the University of Michigan, and recently completed her master's in psychology at National Lewis University. She is the proud mother of a 12-year-old girl, and who she loves sharing new experiences with and passing down a commitment to social justice. We are so grateful and we are so proud to have Ms. Mendoza join us. We are so grateful to the applicants who submitted for the process. It was, we had, the number and caliber of applicants that we had was overwhelming and is a true testament to the commitment to public education in this community. But we are excited that we will have Ms. Mendoza joining us. So, shall we go ahead and bring her? Can you come to the podium to be sworn in?
Should we? Do I need to make the motion?
We need to make the motion.
Oh, we need to make the motion first. I apologize, sorry. So, Lindsay, please, that's why.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Rebecca Mendoza to fill the board vacancy and serve the remainder of the unexpired board term until the next board elections. Second?
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
I, Rebecca Mendoza, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Evanston Skokie School District 65 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school's district assets. I shall encourage and respect the free speech, the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members, and others who seek a hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the rights to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Wow, what an incredible privilege to be here, and to be able to, yeah, I'm still very much in shock. I think that this is an incredible testament of what the Evanston community can do as a product of Evanston School District 65 and District 202. I think that Evanston has so much to be proud of today in what we produce, and I stand here as a product of that. And I want to start my time out here by celebrating everything that we've done. I think that as the school year starts, we have very many challenges ahead, but most importantly, we've come so far. As a parent of District 65, I can't tell you how incredibly proud I am of this school district. We do have our challenges, but I can tell you as a resident, as a parent, as a longtime employee of many nonprofit organizations in Evanston, that there's no place like Evanston. And I think that if anybody can be the beacon, lighthouse district, it can be us. So I thank the community members who came out this evening, and I just encourage you to continue to be engaged, continue to come out. One of the things that I aspire to do here is to let all of our voices be heard, and I think that we are on the right track. We do still have a lot of work to do, but I really do feel so encouraged and so grateful. And to the parents of District 65, I thank you for the many years that you've entrusted me with your children, and that you've entrusted me now with this incredible privilege to serve the school district. As well as to the staff and the employees at District 65, I'm incredibly grateful to be working with you and hope that I can be a supporter and that we can work together. And finally, to the Board, thank you so much for your confidence. And finally, to the board, thank you so much for your confidence, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So thank you.
All right. So we will continue on with our agenda. Joey, you're supposed to say, do you want to go ahead and do this motion?
Okay. Let's see.
Number 15.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2017-18 District 65 tentative budget and the 2017-2018 joint agreement for the operation of Park School tentative budget.
Second?
Second.
And then, I believe we have a presentation?
Yeah, we have a very brief presentation, the full presentation of the tentative budget for fiscal year 1718 was presented to the Finance Committee last Monday. This presentation also will be available online. Tonight, we just want to share some highlights with you and with the public. Fiscal year 17... Tentative budget for fiscal year 1718 is balanced, and in fact, this is our 16th consecutive balanced budget. This budget is balanced because of the operating rate referendum, which was passed by Evanston and Skokie voters in April of 2017. Once again, we want to thank District 65 families for approving this referendum. Thanks to that funding, we will be able to maintain our educational model, we'll be able to maintain small class sizes, increase reading specialist support at our schools, and also move some spending that was previously paid with a long-term debt, with bonds, such as instructional technology and small building projects. So revenues next year, operating revenues are increasing by 23%, and it's because of the referendum funding, which will be received in the fall of 2017. In addition to that revenue source, non-referendum property taxes are increasing only by 0.7%. And from our presentation on last Monday, you can remember consumer price factor history, which has been decreasing. We haven't had a decent consumer price index since 2011, and it's very hard if you stuck it up against expenditures that are increasing at much higher rate, contributing to structural deficit. There are also additional revenues included in the budget, other local land revenues, investment income, also state, we know the future of the state, funding is uncertain, federal revenues and transfers. So this pie chart illustrates our revenues, operating revenues by category, and you can see clearly that we rely on property tax. 78% post-referendum will come from that revenue source, and it's actually very typical for a suburban school district in our geographical location. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are increasing by 11%. It's really a one-time adjustment, and they are increasing for three reasons. Staffing costs due to contractual increases, there are actually 15 new FTEs, which will be covering additional planning costs, as well as student needs and student enrollment. We also will be adding expenditures previously prepaid with fiscal year 16 surplus, things like workers' compensation premium, property liability insurance. So those will be put back, added to our fiscal year 18 budget. We'll be also shifting, referendum shifted initiatives, funded initiatives. I already mentioned instructional technology, small capital projects, these will be added to our operating side of the budget. The budget also includes a small placeholder for pension cost shift. With turmoil happening in Springfield, we just don't know. So right now, until we know for sure that the legislation does not pass, we are including $300,000 in our operating budget for pension cost shift expenditures. Again, a pie chart depicting our expenditures by category, and same thing, basically 80% of our budget is going to fund staffing costs. All the blue portion of the pie and the yellow includes staffing cost. The next couple pages illustrates the resolution, the board resolution, that regulates, really restricts and controls the referendum spending. And that resolution was unanimously approved by the board on April 24. And this is the board's commitment to the community, that we'll be watching and tracking referendum reserves. You will see in a second that the excess of revenues of expenditures seems large in the first few years, but this excess will be put in reserves, and we'll be watching these reserves and making sure that the money is spent on approved expenditures, and we'll be reporting to the board periodically how the funds are spent. So this slide shows updated financial projections, and they will change again next month when we bring final budget. So this is not, this is not anything final, and projections are very fluid. They change as soon as the assumptions change. But you can see pretty clearly that we will be, the way we project right now, we'll be deficit-free through fiscal year 2025, 2425. And I just want to point your attention to line three and five, even though you do see these large excesses of revenues of expenditures, they will be put aside and they will be reserved for future spending. And in a way, we will have two phases, a savings phase and a spending phase. And the way we currently project, the saving phase will continue through fiscal year 2021. And after that year, we're projecting deficit spending, but again, we will be using our reserves to cover these deficits. So we will be in the positive through fiscal '25. We are also hoping that we can stretch that beyond fiscal year '24-'25. But again, the future of the state aid, which accounts for 9% of our budget, is still very uncertain. And this is just next steps in the process of adopting the budget. Next month, we will, there will be a public hearing on the tentative budget, and we will be adapting the budget, the board will be adapting the budget during the same meeting, and the budget will be filed with the county and with the state by October 25. Any questions?
Just a couple points.
And one, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Rafael Obafemi, who has joined us as our new chief operating and chief financial and operating officer, and is working very closely, obviously, with Kathy on this. Two, let me reiterate what we've said publicly again and again. Schools will open next Monday. They will open on time next Monday. That said, I, as superintendent, and the group of superintendents around the state are becoming increasingly more frustrated with legislative colleagues down in Springfield who are at stalemate. And so the governor and the legislative leadership have not decided on how to deploy the resources that are necessary for us to do the operations that we have to do to make progress with our children. So while we're here tonight talking about our important commitment to equity, we're here tonight talking about social studies curriculum, we're here tonight hearing about the stress of tests, we're here tonight doing the business of public education, the hiring of more diverse workforce. Our legislators in Springfield are sitting at stalemate, and I just want to express that frustration, and any sort of pressure that we can put on to try to move forward is really important. That said, schools will open next Monday, and we have concerns, though, if the stalemate continues over the year, where that will have an impact on our resources, but we will open on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Well, I know that it was presented and discussed at the finance meeting last week. And I don't know, did we already discuss? I apologize, I wasn't at last week's meeting. A little bit more in-depth of, you know, so there was a payment that was missed from the state last year, and I know because of the stalemate, have we missed a payment already?
So in June, when we drafted tentative budget, we were only expecting one current payment. At the last, literally on the last day of June, we received additional payments, so we got 75% of the state aid. So we do not have...
For '16-'17.
For '16-'17. So we do not have a deficit that we previously projected, and will be actually contributing a little bit of money to our fund balance. So we will stay at the 20% level, which is still below considerably, with the requested range of 25 to 40, but we will have with a small surplus.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation of the materials. Every year, I think it gets easier and easier to read the budget materials, and this year, I think it was especially phenomenally presented, so thank you for that. If we don't have any additional questions or comments, we can...
Rafael, do you want to mention the community meetings that we are...
Yeah, we've actually, in the interest of transparency in the budget and information to the community, we're holding three community budget presentations this year, and they're scheduled for the fifth, the sixth, and the seventh. The fifth presentation will be, on the fifth, will be held at Haven. The one and the sixth will be held at Shute, and the one scheduled for the seventh will be held at Fleetwood Jordan. It will be from 6:30 to 8 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So shall we move to voting then?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries.
So I move that the board approve the recommended Head Start selection criteria?
My second. Do we have any comments or discussion on the Head Start selection criteria?
I don't think so. I think it's self-explanatory in the long.
All right. So shall we go ahead and...
Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to approval of the Head Start 2017-18 COLA application.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start 2017-2019 COLA application.
Second.
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries. And then another Head Start, approval of the Head Start Change of Scope Continuation Application Adjustment.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start Change of Scope Continuation Application Adjustment.
Second?
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Okay. With that, we will move on to our discussion item, which is our board meeting planning Does everyone have the printed copy? So do you want to give a preface on this at all, or...
Sure. So on an annual basis, what we have been doing is presenting to the board a planning calendar that aligns our strategic plan milestones with our operational milestones and the work that we have underway over time that are based on board priorities. So this process starts at the end of the previous school year, where the board, as a sitting body, offers opportunity, we offer an opportunity for the board to put forward the priorities that the board members as individuals and collectively feel we should be addressing in the year to come. And then what we do is we align that work with the work that we're doing, again, as I said, on the strategic plan, the work that we're doing with our equity commitments, and we then offer a tentative schedule, let's say that again, a tentative schedule for board meeting deliberation throughout the entire year, so we can both make sure that we're doing the work that is necessary to carry around the business of the district and to advance the district's work, and to schedule... My time is done. I'm sure a lot of people would like that to ring, but to make sure that we advance the work of the district in a timely manner and that we, as staff, have the time to prepare our presentations. Embedded in here is a wide range of activities, which my colleagues will talk about upon questioning. We do have consideration of our TWEE programming, as we suggested last year. In April, we have some consideration of our early childhood programming. Joyce Bartsch and I are going to convene with other colleagues, task force, to look at our early childhood programming, and so that's part of the game plan that's embedded in here. And we will be having regular updates on our equity work, as I did this evening, and will continue to do throughout the year. So with that, I don't know if there's other ways to introduce.
Sorry, I did that earlier. The only thing I would draw your attention to also is that the way the calendar's organized, the milestones are presented by quarter, that's just to help us block out our work plans for the year, but we do have past throughout the board meeting calendar, the quarterly updates. So those will cover items that are outlined in the strategic plan milestones. So there may be cases where there's a specific topic you're wondering about that's not a standalone discussion item at a board meeting, but it would be covered or updated on in the context of those quarterly updates, if that makes sense. So those happen once a quarter. Another thing worth noting is that the quarter in which a milestone occurs is not necessarily the only quarter in which that work is taking place. So that question comes up sometimes, why does it say teams get trained in quarter three? You're not doing that until quarter three. No, they may be getting trained in quarters one, two, and three, it's just that the training phase would wrap in quarter three, and that's when it would be a natural pause or time to report out on the closure of that phase of the work. So just to give a little info on that. And then lastly, you know, we set this out one whole year in advance, and we try to strike a balance between realistic and ambitious. And that said, the year will unfold as the year unfolds, which means we're probably going to be more accurate to our plan in the earlier part. Quarter four, it's a little bit harder to say where things will go, and that's part of the reason we do the quarterly updates, so that if and as we need to course correct, we have advanced notice of where things have taken longer than we thought, or taken a different direction, and we need to add things. So we take the opportunity to do that in the context of the quarterly updates. So that's why I think Paul put the emphasis on the tentative, because this is the best laid plan at this point.
Okay. Peter, did you have something?
The only thing I just wanted to add for your information is to just think about the report that Corey Wallace authored and that you all reviewed back in the spring, and how that factored into our planning. So a big part of what we've done here is to prioritize work related to equity, and we have built that into the five areas of the strategic plan. So you will see in most of these five areas that there are different tasks that relate to our equity agenda. And you'll also notice when you look at the board calendar that in November, we'll be coming to you with our thoughtful response to Corey's recommendations, and at that point, you can further see the alignment that we have envisioned between the strategic plan as it has existed and the equity focus that we want to sharpen and add to that strategic plan. And so we'll have, in addition to the work that you can see that's planned here, we'll have a crosswalk between Corey's report and the strategic plan that the board will have a chance to review in November.
Okay. Are there any board questions or comments? Okay, well, I will start then. So I appreciate, so first of all, thank you for this. I always appreciate getting this and being able to see. I think it's a great way for us to see the breadth of work that is being done over the course of the year. And it is substantial. Going back a little bit, Peter, to your comments about the equity report and how that is embedded here, and I know, so November 6th, we'll get the crosswalk. Well, when we saw the equity report in the spring, I think we saw that by the end of October, we would see an implementation plan. Is that what the crosswalk is intended to be, or is that something different?
Yes, that is what it is intended to be. And what we wanted to make sure didn't occur is that we had a strategic plan that said, here's X things that we're going to accomplish by 2020, and then a response to the equity report that was not, that was a response to the report and important work to do but not aligned. And what we found as we reflected on that report was that many of the things Corey was recommending were related to things that were already in the strategic plan. Some things, for example, she called out and asked us to reflect on what we could do about the inequities related to busing, were not related to the strategic plan. And so the document that we're working on now provides a response and an implementation plan to Corey's recommendations, but aligned with what the district has already committed to through the strategic plan.
Okay.
And we would have done this in the October board meeting, but we don't have an October board meeting.
Right, because they have the joint meeting.
Right, and so that's where November 6th comes up first.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do want to say too, that we invited, and we're very much pushed by Corey Wallace's analysis, but we're reserving the right as professional educators to be able to bring forward how we respond to those recommendations. And so that will also be part of the presentation, where many, many things we will agree to, some things we may not, and that will be part of the dialogue that we'll have.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the TWEE discussion and decision that we started a little bit, we teased in the spring. I have some concerns, I would say, about the timing. We have it at the October 9th Working Board meeting, up for discussion, and then decision, basically the next time. Then we have the joint 65202 meeting in between. And so the next time, opportunity we will have to discuss is also when we would have to approve it on the November 6th Working Board meeting. This is obviously going to be a big decision, and I think there will be a lot of things that we want to consider and have time to reflect on and be able to give feedback and, you know, have community input on it. So I'm a little bit concerned that having that discussion one month and then basically the next time we meet also being when we need to decide on it. I understand that there are time, there's timing with the January enrollment, that the decision has to happen at a certain time, but I wonder if it could be pushed at all so that we have a little bit more time for another discussion and reflection and opportunity to fine tune before we make that final decision.
So, you know, I think we can consider that. The challenge is exactly what you identified. And we do have a work plan that involves four different opportunities for community engagement, twice through BPAC, twice through general community meetings. We're working on getting that information out around those meetings.
Okay.
In addition to, and at a point, school-level engagement pending a decision. So, you know, we have laid out a work plan that can allow for a good bit of engagement. We also have a lot of historical work that has gone into decision-making criteria and previous engagement. And so certainly I hear your question or your push. We arrived on that date with a lot of kind of struggle, because we know we want to get that in place and allow for a successful transition, should it be approved, to expand TWEE, and set wherever it may be up for success. And so that is why it's there, because of some of the operational and programmatic things that would need to happen to allow for a successful lift. But we can take that question and see if there's any flexibility.
I guess I would also push, you know, if at all, moving it to the November 13th board meeting, just because if we are going to be discussing the strategic plan and equity crosswalk on November 6th, which I assume will be a pretty hefty discussion that we'll want to have, and also the TWEE being potentially a big discussion that we're going to have, that could. And it looks right now like we don't have anything that would be it. We'll have the summer learning report and strategic plan progress report, but it might make more sense to, if it's at all possible, to push that TWEE discussion and decision to November 13th. That might make the board meetings a little bit more manageable as well.
We can take a look at that and see if it's something of the potential to work.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the ask.
And again, the tension here is the one of wanting to be absolutely engaging and upfront and meeting deadlines for enrollment.
Absolutely, no, understood. No, I fully appreciate that, so if there's any way that we could shift things around just to give us one more additional opportunity to look at it before we have to make that decision, I think, I think that would make me feel more comfortable. I don't know how other board members feel about it. And again, I think, you know, we don't want to shortchange that discussion or the strategic plan and equity crosswalk update. So not having those two on the same, in the same meeting might also be helpful.
Thank you.
I was mostly agreeing. Okay. And then, when we see the crosswalk and the implementation plan, do we think, do we, have we adequately, what are your thoughts on, have we adequately left some flexibility in this, in the planning schedule and the board meeting schedule, however it needs to work out? If there are things that, you know, based on whatever that implementation plan looks like?
The shortest answer is yes. The reason I say that is that we really took a lot of the recommendations into account as we built the plan. So as you read through the milestones that we have established, you will see many things that already respond to what Corey has recommended. So I mentioned earlier the busing.
And I guess that's the one that I have the biggest question about.
And when you look in the, I believe it's in the family and community engagement milestones, we have a quarter four milestone around having laid out a process for moving forward. And so there are, in terms of how we will engage the community, how we will have done the research to think about what some options might be. And so on most of those, just using that as an example, most of those recommendations that she made in the report, there are some milestones in what we've already laid out that begin to respond to what she has recommended. So it will not be going from, there's nothing in the current milestones, to now we have to fit in the equity. We've already thought about that, so there may be some additional things that we want to do, but it won't be going from, this document, I guess I'm trying to say, already incorporates much of what she's recommending.
And I would say that on the crosswalk document, Peter's really talking about the work plan aspect of responding to the equity report. And another purpose of the crosswalk document is sort of, we'll be at a midpoint in our STRAT Plan implementation around this point, and that's our time to look at where we've come, where we are, how our focus has changed to increase our look at equity and what we're doing, and to help frame up the work for the remainder of the life of the STRAT Plan, and where we're going to focus and prioritize our effort. So that has a bit longer of a time look on it to set the context for where we are and where we see the STRAT Plan going through the rest of its lifespan, since our goal always has been to keep it fresh and make sure that, you know, it doesn't get dusty and sit on a shelf, and we move forward with a lot of new things that enter into our field division or elevated as priorities, and the plan sits and stays dusty. So that'll have a bit of a longer time span, it's not just for the one year.
A couple of quick comments. One is so that we're not trapped in our own language. When we talk about the STRAT Plan, the strategic plan, we're talking about high-quality teaching and learning, and that relates to our literacy engagement, our commitments to kids below the 25th percentile, the way we actually do our English language learner perspectives, et cetera. So this is our, these are our deep plans on a yearly basis. It also includes issues around a thriving workforce, and how do we do recruiting and retaining? And as the community members tonight pushed, and I appreciate it, how do we diversify our workforce? We also talk about safe and supportive school climates, and how are we really addressing school climate issues, especially as it relates to race? Let's be candid and talk about black children, African-American children, Latino, Latinx children in our district, and white children, and let's talk about whether or not we have a safe environment. It also includes family and community involvement, as Melissa's sitting with us tonight. And so how are we deeply engaging, and where are we not engaging, and what sort of barriers can we address? And it talks about financial sustainability, which, again, Rafael and Kathy presented tonight. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we talk in our own words, which are code words for STRAT Plan, we're moving all this stuff, but this is the work of the district and the commitment of both the board and the senior staff to move forward. The second piece is, this is a planning document that meshes our strategic goals and aspirations and what we believe will make a difference in the lives of kids with our operation goals. So all of my colleagues sitting on that side of the table and over here are working overtime to get school up and ready. And so that's part of just the way we do our work. And so as we move forward, we are absolutely open to doing work that will evolve, but then there may be trade-offs. And that's where, as board partners with me and with the team, we'll have to look at what we're suggesting to do, and sometimes we'll get caught in a trade-off so that we have the time to engage, and that we have the time to actually do the work well. And so that's why this, we call this affectionately the placemat, but this sort of places all of the work that we're doing from our strategic sense and driving the vision of the district with our operational goals, and then tries to set and does set a board meeting agenda that is open to the public. And we post this on our website as well, so people will know what we're doing.
And then, I guess, you know, to address, we had so many speakers earlier this evening discussing the social studies curriculum, and I know that that is not one of the curriculum reviews that we have coming up this year. But it does seem to me, as we are looking at equity and, you know, trying to figure out what are the sort of the combination of some of the longer-term strategies, as well as things that we can implement now that can have a meaningful impact, maybe looking at some of the curriculum, and particularly looking at some of the social studies curriculum that we are engaging in. Is there any way, not necessarily with the full review, but looking with an eye towards, you know, some of the culturally relevant and culturally accurate units that we can do? Is there any way to embed that into some of the work that we're doing this year?
So Dr. Pitts and I, we actually met with this group about two weeks ago, and very much appreciate the input that they have provided, and had a very strong conversation that I think was very productive. We do have a few potential strategies, working through our standing committees, and a couple other potential ways to be able to take a look possibly at what some of the culminating projects are, and to try to see, are there certain particular areas where we can provide other assessment options or things along those lines in order to begin to make progress on representing a greater, you know, a broader perspective of our story. We also, the way we set up our curriculum review process, we set it up as an eight-year process that has a gap year in year four and year eight. And the purpose of the gap years are to take a look at content that have had a shift in standards or shift in need, and determine if we need to reorder or move things within our review process. And so that is something that we can look at in the spring and see if social studies, because social studies has had a shift in standards since it was last written, and see if there's possibility to shift the ordering. It would move it up to begin the next school year if we were able to make that decision. There are other curriculums that have had shifts in standards and other things, but that is something that we're absolutely, you know, is part of the review process and would be something that we would consider as well. So we take the comments very seriously. We're going to take a look at what, within reason, do we think we can do in the short term, and what can be done in the long term.
Okay. And I would, you know, suggest to, you know, thinking about it in terms of not just broadening perspectives, but really looking at units that could be damaging, and that, you know, just because we maybe have done the unit for a number of years, that maybe it's time to look at it with a different lens of whether or not they, even starting beginning this year, we should be continuing.
And I think the units themselves are defined with the learning standards that are required and general areas of focus. In some ways, what we need to do is take a look at the way in which the units have kind of historically been enacted. You know, there's this curricular doxin themselves, you know, are relatively strong. It is, in some ways, as the speaker's brought up, you know, the way in which sometimes we interpret or tell the story, when we don't have the support to be able to tell and think about the story in a different way. And so I do think seed work is going to be extremely positive for this work. I think Beyond Diversity is going to be extremely positive for this work. These aren't things that any of us, any of us as educators ever do intentionally, and it's about raising education and raising awareness.
Of course not, yeah.
Within our workforce and outside of our workforce, because some of these are things that happen in our communities because they've always happened, and people value them, and it's about shifting a perspective. And tonight's comments are an important step in beginning to get that voice out to shift perspective.
Absolutely, absolutely, no. I did not intend to, you know, I don't think any of the things are happening intentionally. But again, I think I said, like, just because we've done something one way doesn't necessarily mean that we need to continue. And I would also challenge us to, you know, look, ask our third-grade teachers. I would bet there's some variance in how different teachers are teaching that unit based on-
100%.
People who've gone through C-training and not, so maybe that's learning that we can share more broadly, so that even if we can't necessarily eliminate the unit this year, maybe we can shift how we teach it.
Understood.
Is it my understanding that the Pioneer Day isn't actually part of the curriculum? It's my understanding that Pioneer Day is parent-led activity?
The Pioneer Day is a culminating activity that has been associated with a unit. The unit in itself, around the terminology we use and the perspectives we teach, can certainly be addressed, but it is not an activity that is written into the curriculum. It is a way that, and kind of a culminating activity, is enacted at some schools. And so I'm not going to situate where it comes from, because I think it varies school to school. It's something we need to take a look at and educate and figure out how to shift perspectives and tell a more complete story.
A couple of questions? All right. My questions are kind of specific, but, so my first question, and also again, thank you. This is a great tool, and I'm really happy to see the integration of equity work into the calendar. My first question is just, could we hear a little bit more about the early childhood discussion in the April meeting? I just wanted to get a little more context around what the content, we're supposing the content might be.
We are going to, and Joyce can also comment on this, we are going to this fall convene a group of experts from the community and from our centers to do an in-depth look at early childhood here in JH, here in Evanston. And we will base this, we did a community needs assessment most recently last spring. And so we'll be looking in depth at what we're offering, how we're offering, and how we might think about changing our program and programming. And, you know, and some of this is driven, quite frankly, and importantly, by the research that many of us saw from Sean Riordan, that looked at the, as one of the citizens pointed out today, the achievement gaps, the opportunity gaps that exist, and really noted, the Stanford professor did, that these gaps start way before third grade. And so the question is, if that's the case, then what are we doing in our own Head Start and early Head Start, and how can we actually celebrate what is working, and how can we actually do things differently? So we are in the midst of pulling together this group, and we'll probably have a couple sessions sometime this fall to be able to chunk through what we have. And then we did a placeholder in April. If we can do it sooner, we'll try to do it sooner. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to overpromise on that. We wanted to make sure that we can do the in-depth analysis that is necessary. Joyce, anything else?
I think that's a good description of what Dr. Gordon and I have talked about in terms of doing, really wanting to look-
in terms of doing, really wanting to look closely at our center, our practices, our assessment, you know, to have some subcommittees that may take a look at a variety of different issues so that we can then be clear about what we feel are recommendations that we'd like to make in terms of areas that we might want to make some change.
And within a community context, so what else is being offered in the community and what sort of supports are there for the numbers of families who need those supports?
Great. And were we anticipating, I think you mentioned, achievement data of some sort being referenced in that area, or would that come with a different report? Or outcome, achievement or outcome data being?
On early childhood, or? Peter, can?
Yeah, so a number of our reports, our Achievement and Accountability Report, our Black Student Achievement Report, and our Hispanic Student Achievement Report, look at incoming data about our students. So I would have to go back and look at those to see, you know, what else needs to be reported, but I think, you know, a lot of information about the performance of students based on where they attended kindergarten is already public, and I don't have any concern about
reporting.
In the Achievement and Accountability Report, further disaggregating that if we need to.
Go ahead, if it's relevant. I mean, yeah, because I was going to go somewhere else, so go for it. Thank you. Also, I noticed in the placemat that in, I think it's towards the end of the first quarter, one of the milestones was convening affinity groups. One of the strategic plan milestones was the convening of affinity groups. And so I just wanted to hear a little bit more what the vision was for that and what, like, what the, how that would be discussed or reported out to at the board level.
So are we talking more about the family or the staff ones, or both?
I think it, I read family.
Yeah, it's a quarter-two, launch family affinity groups.
So I have been in discussion with two parents, actually, about convening a ABC, African-Black Caribbean, family affinity group to pretty much mirror our B-PAC, our bilingual parent kind of achievement committee, just to start to build community within our community. There are certain issues, topics, that pertain to our Black and Latinx families, and the information is just not being conveyed. So how can we start to build those spaces for our families where information is funneled, they get access to resources, pretty much a continuation of what was requested from our Black and Latinx parent advisory that Cory Wallace and I had put on last year? So just a continuation of that, and the idea is to have both groups start to meet together and meet separately as well, knowing that there will be language differences and different issues that pertain to certain groups.
So then my, my other question, which I think that Pianus wasn't able to be here, but she forwarded as a question as well, so I think both of us had the question about how we'd get an update on algebra and the integration of the algebra programs and how that went for there, even if it's like preliminary and/or if some of that is anecdotal, but if there will be an update at any point in the year.
So we didn't put it on the calendar for this year because part of the data in the evaluation plan that we shared with the board memo was to look at end-of-year achievement data. There is qualitative data and quantitative data. Some of the qualitative data would be available ahead of time, but clearly MAP scores would not be available. And so that, that is why it's not on there at this point in time. But we can certainly consider adjusting that as needed.
And then also, we added the fifth-period planning, and I'm not sure if I, if I missed it, but if there was going to be an update on how that's going at the middle school level and the K through five level.
And the rationale is the same on that, because we're gathering information as the year goes on, and so it seemed like something to, that was best suited once we complete the first year. And we are collecting quantitative and qualitative data as we go through the year based on the evaluation plan. Okay.
And I think the, the last question that I have is, I don't, and I think that this is something that we can work in, but I think a priority for me is thinking, I really appreciate the overlay of the equity work onto the strategic planning calendar, but also just the importance of adopting some kind of equity impact assessment tool and having some kind of commitment to that earlier on in the year than, than later for the board, the board reports that we're receiving. So I don't know, it, it seems like we could probably fit that into someplace here, but I, I think that's a, a tool or a discussion that is missing right now.
And so we will take that under advisement. We are using the Race Forward questions, and actually when Andaleep convened the principals last week, and all of us convened the principals, we actually shared the tool. And right now, we're pushing hard to consider all the questions in there as a driving conceptual framework, so let's, we'll come back on how that would be adopted if, as we would move forward.
Sergio, he said, did you have some?
I just wanted to go back to some of the reporting around early childhood. I know the state is rolling out the kids' assessment, which is an observational assessment, so will you guys be taking into account the kids' assessment, which is, again, rolling out this year to show kindergarten readiness, but also measure kids', you know, social, emotional development, as well as cognitive development.
So we will not be implementing the kids' assessment this year. We chose not to do that for a variety of reasons, largely the, the high cost in terms of teacher training time for implementation. Our kindergarten teachers have a lot on their plates, and we really wanted to focus in on tools that could guide and assist them with their instruction. And the kids' assessment really is rather unwieldy when it comes to actually gathering the data without necessarily providing the kindergarten teachers with a lot of information that can help them modify and, and guide their instruction. And so we felt like the cost of that in terms of implementing it was too high, given the other things, particularly around the K3 literacy framework, that at this point we need kindergarten teachers to lift.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, again, for putting this together. It's always very helpful to see everything laid out like this, so we appreciate the work that, that goes into it and being able to see it all like this.
And we will, this is really minor, but we will date this, and then if there are changes, we will update it.
Update.
And then make sure that there's a revised date on that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Updates and upcoming work. I don't, since the start, year is really starting, I don't think we have any updates, so to speak. Does anybody, rather than going through them individually, if anybody has an update on something? Otherwise, we have the various committee and other meetings. Okay, then with that, at nine o'clock, I call this meeting adjourned.